I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the love, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose he has been ever.
Okay, can we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? All right, motion accepted. Somebody say so.
No, she's good.
You all square, babe?
Yeah, I guess. With new technology.
All right, uh, all in favor of the adoption of the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Post? Ayes, ayes. We have to have a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, the two items on the consent agenda are approval of the minutes. For the first set of minutes, we have an edit on page fifty-one. There's the word warehousing that needs to be housing. And I've got a, I've got a note of that for the town clerk. And then, in the second section of minutes, we need to add that the healthcare task force presented during that meeting as well. And so, the town clerk will handle those adjustments to those minutes.
Then you'll take care of it?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion?
You still need to adopt them with the proposed changes.
All right, we'll have to have the consent agenda approved as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Ayes, ayes. Consent agenda as amended with the amendments have been changed and accepted. All right, it's public comment period. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Melissa.
Sure. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded.
Good afternoon, good evening. Welcome to the new year. I'm going to talk tonight something other than healthcare. And that was on the issue of B1 changes that are being proposed. Our family owns several buildings in town and has owned those buildings, some of them for a hundred years. The, the ordinance, and I understand the need to tweak things from time to not, time, but the proposed tweak that's being made tonight could place many of the buildings that are currently in town in use in the historic district in a non-conforming status. Clarifying the language on first floor, I understand that. But the other might need a little bit further discussion amongst your board, your staff, and the people that own the property, because I don't believe it'd be the intention of anybody on the board, staff, to make the buildings in town non-conforming even more than what they are with the proposed ordinance. So, if you, if you would take careful look at some of this language, it, what I'm most concerned about would be the stormwater. When you go from a no-storm water, and I'm not saying that was correct, but that's the way it's been for a long time, to a fifty to seventy-five, that really has a major impact on those properties that are fully developed. So, any consideration of that, I would greatly appreciate you looking into.
Anyone else? Anybody else feel like we heard during the public comment period? Here in Nance, the closed public comment period. Your show, Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item six on your agenda are a number of quasi-judicial hearings. The first one, six A, is for Salt Meadow Landing, the special use permit application of which you all are very familiar. The applicant was traveling this week and is not able to attend the meeting tonight and had requested that the meeting or the hearing be continued. And so, we found a mutual date that seems to work for everyone. Your regular meeting in February is going to be held on February the eighth, because my attendance at the winter conference for managers will be the week prior, which is when your regular meeting will be held. So, my recommendation is that tonight, we just go ahead and continue the Salt Meadow Landing special use permit application to February the eighth.
Oh, oh, continue it or just lay it over? Don't make a difference on yet.
Continue it.
Yeah. I think it is. Do we have, do we have to have a motion on that?
If everybody agrees, I don't think so. I think that you can do that by consensus, but if somebody wanted to make a motion, it would certainly be appropriate.
Is it all right if we do it by consensus?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do it by consensus.
I mean, I think we all got emailed and all came up with a consensus to do it on the eighth, correct?
Yes. Okay. So, the next item on your agenda, item six B, is the special use permit application for the Dare County Youth Center. And I'll let the town attorney take it over, but I will note that we have Dustin Peele from Dare County and Michael Strater from Quibbelen Associates here this evening for that application.
Thank you, Melissa. The, the board's probably a little bit too familiar now with my little spiel from the beginning of quasi-judicial hearings, since we've had it the last three out of four meetings, maybe. But again, tonight, we have two quasi-judicial hearings that are going to be in front of you. So, I'm going to read through it the first time, and the second time, I'm going to assume that everyone was here for both and make that comment at the beginning of the second one. The purpose of this quasi-judicial hearing is for the board to determine whether or not a special use permit should be granted to Dare County for operation of a youth center. Brief overview of the quasi-judicial hearing process, for those who aren't familiar. In reviewing the S U P application, the Board of Commissioners is a formal quasi-judicial board which operates under strict rules and procedures which are set forth by statute in a fashion similar to a court of law. The board's decisions must be based upon substantial competent material factual evidence presented under oath at this hearing. While the board's not strictly bound by the courtroom rules of evidence, they are guided by those rules and the general statutes as to what evidence is admissible. Hearsay, generalization, speculation, and most lay witness opinions may be subject to objections precluding them from consideration in the board's decision-making process. In particular, lay witness opinions on matters such as traffic, land valuation, and other issues will require expert witness testimony. Only qualified expert witnesses may provide competent testimony on those matters. In that regard, we ask witnesses to restrict their testimony. Only factual information is relevant to the limited issues under consideration. Testimony by all witnesses must be given under oath or affirmation. Witnesses would go to the lectern and identify themselves in order to provide their testimony. The initial parties are the applicant and the town. The parties have the ability to do things such as testify and cross-examine each other and provide argument through their attorneys. And the general public may provide testimony at the end, but isn't allowed to provide objections or argument. We've discussed this on, in the prior meetings about conflicts related to having a fixed opinion or undisclosed ex parte communications, or having a close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the matter. Does anyone have any conflicts that they believe preclude them from, from hearing this application from Dare County? Process-wise, it's the applicant's burden to show that they meet the ordinance, but if they meet the ordinance, then, and aren't rebutted by a preponderance of competent contrary evidence, then they must be provided the special use permit. We'll, we'll have town testify first, provide an overview of the application. Once they've completed their evidence, the applicant will have an opportunity, and ultimately, the general public will have an opportunity to provide evidence related to the relevant standards at issue as well. The board may, but is not required, make a final decision tonight. They will make a decision ultimately to either grant the S U P, deny it, or to grant it with reasonable conditions. They shall issue it if it's with, if they find that it is within their jurisdiction, the application is complete, and if completed, is proposed in the application, the development will comply with all of the requirements of the ordinance. They may deny it if would not be in conformity with the land use plan, or the proposed use will not be compatible with the area in which it's located. Relevant requirements are those found in Article A of the town zoning ordinance for the B2 general business district where the property is located pursuant to Section eight one B. In addition to the standards, dimensional standards under Section eight two, the following five standards apply. They must maintain, enhance, the public health, safety, and welfare, must maintain or enhance the value of adjacent property or be a public necessity, must comply with the general intent of the B2 zone for physical development of the area, must contribute architecture to the traditional village-like atmosphere of the historic town, and comply with all of the regulations contained in the zoning ordinance. The recommendation and information from the planning board shouldn't be used as a basis for your decision, and the board can attach some reasonable and appropriate conditions and safeguards to a granting of the permit if it ultimately gets there. So, now that all that's done, I'm assuming that there's no one here to intervene or make any other particular motions. We'll move on to the hearing on the merits of the appeal. If anyone who expects to give testimony at this hearing would come forward so that they can be sworn by the clerk.
In the state room, I say aye.
Aye.
He's promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Thank you. That, we'll now open the evidentiary hearing, and town staff can move forward and provide us an overview of the application.
Good evening. Staff has received a special use permit application from Dare County regarding the plans to build a Manio Youth Center located at one oh one North Highway sixty-four, two sixty-four. Staff has presented the youth center plans to the Preservation and Architectural Review Committee on August first and December fifth. This committee is to provide a, as an advisory committee and provide recommendations to the planning board. On December fifth, they came up with the following recommendations, which I do believe a lot of them have been addressed regarding the operation and the adequate, the size of the building. The Dare comments include they would like to see a second-story structure. There is, their opinion that the building presented did not have enough space inside or outside. The proposed building was not large enough for the impending growth. The roof pitch is wrong. Needs to follow the Manio Way. They wanted to ensure that the county use the Manio Elementary School, Dare County Health and Human Services Building, and the Farm Bureau Building for building design inspiration. They suggested that a public hearing be held for input. They are disappointed that the county was not at the meetings. Then, on August ninth and December thirteenth of twenty twenty-two, staff presented the plans to the planning board. The planning board, during their decision, acknowledged that they could not base a recommendation of approval or denial from, I guess, design elements, but they had to base the decision on whether it met the town zoning ordinance and land use plan. They did recommend approval. Staff has come up with the following recommended commit, uh, conditions. One being the hours of exterior construction activities, including operation of bulldozers and earth-moving equipment shall be limited to the hours of seven a.m. and seven p.m. or dusk, whichever occurs first. Parking lot lighting shall be directed to minimize glare on public roads and adjacent properties. Dare County work with staff to have the crosswalk restripped at Fernando Street and Highway sixty-four, two sixty-four, and have a new crosswalk installed at the north side of Agona Street and Highway sixty-four, two sixty-four. To have a handrail or fencing placed along the southern walk between the drainage basin and Fernando Street. To provide a natural landscape buffer or screening, privacy fence located at the property line east and adjacent to the residential dwelling. To screen HVAC units and dumpsters to keep clear of trash. Staff comments under one sixty D, special use permits. The regulations may provide that the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, or Governing Board here decide special use permits with principles, conditions, safeguards, and procedures in the regulations. Reasonable conditions and safeguards may be imposed where appropriate. Such conditions may include street and utility right-of-way, dedicated public space for recreation and facilities. Conditions and safeguards imposed under, the subsection shall not include requirements for conditions and safeguards imposed under, for which local government does not have the authority under statute to regulate nor requirements for which courts have held to unenforceable if imposed directly by local governments, including without limitation taxes, impact fees, building design elements, driveway-related improvements, and other unauthorized limitations. So, after review of the plans, staff felt that it, the proposed development was, in fact, inconsistent with the Manio Way, the town zoning ordinance, and comprehensive plan. Were also aware that there was a concern about the roof pitch. And during my review of the Manio Way, the only suggestion for roof pitch was on page twenty-four, which says the roof should be gabled with a roof pitch of twelve-twelve to eight-twelve, was that, that referenced a residential, single-family home. But on page forty-three, under public spaces, which on that page also has a photo of a Dare County government building, states that the, what else am I placing? Institutional buildings should integrate with surrounding land uses. And then, the surrounding, the current uses there, I mean, if you go south, you have, I believe, which was probably a home at one point in time and now law office, the COA building. You have a gas station, and then heading north, auto repair shop, the Pizza Hut. But a lot of these buildings, they all have flat roofs. The COA new building has a four, a pitch of four-twelve. And that is the proposed pitch of the Manio Youth Center. So, I have to review. And then, in addition, the Manio Comprehensive Plan dated July first, twenty twenty-two, Chapter Four Vision for the Future identifies this lot as general commercial, and outlines the primary, a primary use as county buildings, as you can see in Attachments two and three. So, I have to review. Staff does recommend that the board approve this special use permit with the recommended conditions.
Any questions from the board?
Matt, you mentioned, so far back, you probably don't remember, and I barely do. You mentioned handrails. Where do these handrails go? What?
There's a retention pond, a stormwater retention pond between the building and Fernando Street, that which will hold water.
Is that a handrail down the side of the highway you're talking about?
No.
Come on.
Any other questions from the board?
I was just wondering, the building that's currently there, what is the roof pitch on that?
I have no idea.
Because I think there was a picture in our packet, and to me, the reach, the roof pitch looked almost identical to the roof pitch that is proposed on the new building. It is? Well, is it, I think there was a picture up there. That's that one. And is there not one of the current building that's there? I thought I saw that in my packet. Anyway, in looking at both of them, I mean, I'm not an architect, so I can't tell you if they were exact, but to me, they were similar. The pitch on the building that's currently there, I don't think's much different than what was proposed by the county.
Commissioner Whitman?
Any questions there? The board members?
I just have, I just have a comment. I think the pitch on this building is, is it four-twelve? Right, four-twelve. And, you know, as our attorney was talking about, you know, complying with the historic village atmosphere and all that. And Matt, I know that you said, well, there are other buildings in the area and they have flatter roofs, but there are also buildings in the area that have higher pitched roof. I, I think the, I always call it the art building at COA. I think that must be an eight-twelve, or at least an eight-twelve. So, I just have concerns that, that this really is not going in the direction that our policies in our comp plan have, you know, signified that this is what our residents want. So, I am concerned about the roof pitch. And, and I'm basing that on the member folks from the Preservation Architectural Review Committee who also brought that up, that they were, that it just felt, as we're, made this commitment to the Manio Way of building, that this building seemed different. And of course, you know, once a building goes up, we'll have that visual impact for decades, maybe, you know, more, maybe three-quarters of a century. So, it really matters what we do. So, I just want to be extremely careful about, I mean, I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful purpose for the building. Of course, having the Manio Youth Center is exactly what we need, but I, I am concerned about the pitch of the roof.
That's my, the staff report said that under one sixty D, the town has, cannot regulate design standards. And I don't have the code section here, but I printed this right before the meeting from U N C School of Government, which states the law provides a list of what cannot be regulated, and these include the exterior building color, the style or type of exterior material, the style or materials of roofs or porches, exterior non-structural ornamentation, location of, and styling of windows and doors, including garage doors, location of rooms, interior layout rooms. That we can, you know, enforce the height, lot coverage, orientation with setbacks. I mean, there are exceptions, but the town needs to take the action to adopt a preservation ordinance and be certified by the state, showing that we meet federal and state guidelines.
So, I understand in terms of, like, of forcing, but the county has always been such a good partner in Manio. And so, I think to present that to the county and say, would it be possible? I mean, is that something that we could do, is look at a different roof pitch? And be that as it may, but I think that there, the county has always endorsed the Manio Way of building. And so, I guess that would be my, my question, maybe not for you, but for the folks in the county. I mean, would that be something that would be, and maybe I'm over speaking?
They'll have their opportunity to come up in a minute, and you can ask them. I, I will say that the limitations on regulation of design criteria, what Matt just went through about garages and colors and doors, that only applies to residential. So, commercial things can be regulated in terms of architectural standards. And you, but you've adopted that to some degree by, in that area, requirements with your Manio Way of building and stuff.
Yes.
And what Matt has come to the conclusion is, is that he feels that it meets the Manio Way of building in terms of the roof pitch, because he's looked at that and he looked at the rest of it. So, I think that, you know, the evidence that's before you probably right now is that it would likely meet the current requirements of the ordinance in that regard. But I just wanted to correct that you can have architectural standards, such as the Manio Way of building, applicable to commercial structures. You cannot have them applicable to residential structures under statute.
Yes, and I, I'm aware that our Preservation Architectural Review Committee is, you know, is a group who studies the Manio Way of building. They're the ones that I look to for recommendations about that. But I do know that they are, they are volunteers that we select. And so, you know, I honor what the staff says, but I do see that there's like a conflict going on here and just wanted to bring that up, so.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. It's not germane, I guess, to the subject too much. I have a problem with this. We've started it a long time ago, the Manio Way. And I keep throwing around in my mind, what is the Manio Way? Is it the old days, back in eighteen, early nineteen hundreds? Is it in the twenties? Or is it present? I know that's a book. Written by the committee. So, I just, I think we need to go by rules and regulations, and that's a beautiful building. If we try to hold it up on kind of a pitch, we're in trouble.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the applicant for Matt? Is anybody else going to testify from the town, Melissa? Okay, so, seeing that, we will ask the applicant if they would like to provide any testimony.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Dustin Peele. I'm the project manager for Dare County. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and answer some of your questions. As you guys have all mentioned, it is a beautiful building. We at the county feel that it does meet the Manio standards, and we've heard some of the, the comments and the concerns, and they've trickled back to myself from County Manager, Mr. Bobby Alton. And we're going to do everything we can to address the, the concerns. And we're going to do everything we can to address the, the concerns. You know, our understanding is that the roof pitch right now, as it stands, is really the last point of contention that, you know, we're trying to work through. And as it's proposed as a four twelve, as it's been stated, it does mirror a lot of the other buildings, you know, in the vicinity of this. But if, if you all would prefer it to be something of a six twelve, for example, that's something that we would take back and consider with our architects, our engineers, and we'd be more than happy to allow that to happen, as long as it doesn't drastically change the programming of the building or increase the cost significantly. You know, if, if it's approved tonight, with that understanding. So with that being said, is there any other additional questions or comments that I can answer for you all tonight? Square footage? Gosh, off the top of my head, I believe it's right around like four, five thousand. Michael, do you have that in front of you? I think it's approximately forty-eight hundred, but we'll just say close to five thousand square feet.
I'm by the reason, of course, I do the building a particular way, and when my two brothers are in my research at school, I do those reports in three years, and our children are building, our kids in a tight space, and seeing y'all have came to the facility. They're proud, they're proud. So I certainly vote that we score do not hold this project up in vote. I do not hold Manio, kind of Manio, where I serve, to hold up this building. The children need the building. They need the building. We're in Dare County, we're in kind of Manio, and our kids is in a space that they have to play outside, and outside is the parking lot, is the parking lot, not playground is the parking lot. So I certainly say, my four fellow Northamers, make sure that we lose this, this project. Thank you.
I concur with you. Of course, I don't have a vote, as y'all will know, I say it all the time. But if Dare County has chosen to put the youth center here in Manio of that nature, what we're looking at, I say it's an accolade to Manio. And if, I wonder if any of y'all have taken time to go out to Benet's Center tonight? It's amazing. You need to go if you haven't been. She feeds them, she educates them, she has guys come in from Currituck as teachers, teaching school health and that, the password. This little center up here, used to be Kellogg Supply. There's fifty or sixty kids in there, they all can't get in the building at the same time. Before you start running your mouth a lot, you need to look at these facilities and go look at it and see what's going on inside of it. It's pathetic. And this is just another step forward to help our children.
Any other questions?
I just have one comment. I just wanted to let my colleagues know, under no circumstances was I not going to support something that is as valuable it is as it is. But it's nice to know that the county will work with the town in making it as Manio, the Manio Way of Building. So maybe we can get both of those things done tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from commissioners? Mr. Peel, can I ask you one quick question?
Yes, sir, please do.
Have you seen the conditions that staff recommended about the hours of operation and the lighting in the parking lot and those sort of things? Do you have any issues with any of those conditions?
No, sir, I do not. And in fact, I believe the photo, photogenic, photometric policies that you all have in place have been received by our architects and engineers, and we are actively working to accommodate those needs as well, to ensure that your day, your nighttime light isn't an issue or nuisance to anybody like that. As far as the construction goes, you know, I was the project manager on the College of the Albemarle, and I don't think we had any issues as far as working hours between dusk and dawn or seven and seven, whatever occurred later. So I would assume and expect that those same working conditions and environments would be applicable to this project as well.
Any other questions?
I just, I do have a question. I, I'm afraid I, I don't know if I heard it correctly or not, but were the rafter tales included on that, on that list, the rafter tales?
I don't have that list in front of me. I believe there was five or six items, the county seal being removed from the face of the building, the circular dormer, whatever this, whatever the list is, the county, again, as a partner, was more than happy to do what we can to accommodate the, the questions and the concerns and the recommendations that you all have put in front of us.
Thank you.
I can't say for certain that yes, I'll sign on the dotted line that all of these will be accounted for, but we will do what we can to, to meet you all as our partners while staying within your current town ordinances and, and walls for construction.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was on the list. I didn't hear it when, when Matt was reading off that list, so I just wanted to make sure that.
I do see it on here, yes, ma'am.
Very well.
The bullet points.
I just want to make sure it wasn't an oversight. Thank you. Great.
Just really quickly, just so we're clear, there will be some seal on a sign or something so that the public knows it's funded.
Yes, that is correct. If, if in fact, it's, it's the desire of the town to remove the county seal from the building itself, we'll create a, a sign similar to what you see now in front of the administration building off of Highway sixty-four. It'll likely be in the grass area next to the highway, designating the building as Dare County Manio Youth Center or whatever that vernacular looks like. And that will designate the building as its intended purpose, as opposed to having the seal fastened to the side of the building.
Do you know right of hand if the other youth centers in Dare County have the seal?
Off the top of my head, I don't know that any of them have the seal on the building. I do know they all have signs with the county insignia on it, but I don't know for a fact off the top of my head if they have it on the building itself. But again, whatever the desire of you all, the town board, and the residents of Manio is, in one way or the other, the county is willing to accommodate that, that need.
Well, I think some of the confusion in the beginning, when we, I think probably multiple commissioners got feedback was, you know, as it says up there, Parks and Rec. So I think a lot of people were thinking, you know, basketball courts, you know, whatever. And it's, it's part of Parks and Rec, but it is the youth center for children after school, to have a place to study. So I think, once that confusion got straightened up, I think a lot of people changed their views and became on board with what you guys are doing. And I think it's a great looking building. I know Carolyn's going to be happy. I think she's going to be happy.
She is.
And I think, and I think it's a, a great asset for it to be in the town.
Appreciate it, we do as well.
Any other questions? I think that's all for you, Mr. Peel. Mr. Strater, do you have anything you wanted to say? Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Strater, who's the engineer on the project? Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to provide any, they're not going to get to ask the questions, but they get to provide some testimony if they want to. Does anybody from the public wish to testify on factual matters about whether or not the standards of the ordinance are being met by this proposed development application? If you'll raise your hand, if you're interested. Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing and hand it back to you, Mr. Mayor, for the board's consideration of whether or not to grant, deny, or grant with conditions the proposed special use permit.
I make a motion that we grant the special use permit with conditions?
With the conditions that staff has proposed?
Well, yeah.
Okay. And would you want me to draft a, an order that included findings of fact appropriate with the evidence presented today as well?
Yeah.
To protect us and everyone, why don't you make the motion for this grant?
I, I think it's covered, and just need a second.
What you said, Ben?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, there's a open motion on the floor for a grant permit for the Dare County Youth Center. All in favor?
We do need a second.
All second?
We got a second.
Oh, I'm tired. Second, all, here's a second. Motion of second, okay.
So Mayor?
I'm confused. Motion of second. All right, all in favor?
Mayor, can you call for discussion? Just real quick, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that this motion also includes the county looking at the things that were mentioned. Does the motion include that, then?
It includes the conditions that were listed, but that would not include, I did not see anything about the seal or the pitch, the roof, in the conditions that were listed. So it would take a different motion or modified motion to do that. So if it's Mayor Protem's motion, if she wants to include those things, she can, and if she doesn't, then the motion?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I think we need to get the project approved.
Well, she's made a motion, we got a second. We got to go back to the beginning.
Well, she said she doesn't want to change it, so her motion is essentially to grant it with the conditions that are proposed in the agenda packet by staff and that were brought up by staff, which do not include the seal or the pit, any roof pitch changes. And that, that would be the motion that's on the table.
But attorney, I, we can go back and look at that, right?
Yes, if you want to change it, you can.
Yeah.
So would?
You want your motion to stand?
I want my motion to stand.
All right, second to stand?
Stand.
Why is the motion second on the floor? All in favor, say aye.
Well, just a second. We, we aren't sure if they even will agree to change it yet. I mean, what we heard was it's going to depend on cost above all else. So we aren't sure if the county will say yes to a six foot, but we will say yes to a four, aren't we? And then we're hoping they'll work with us and accommodate it. Is that not what we're doing here? I don't know. That's what I was understanding.
Okay.
It's a good, it's a grace.
I just want to make sure that, that the message is still clear with you, that we really would like for those things to be looked at, and that.
That is very clear, but what Commissioner Stinsonette said is fact that we will do what we can to accommodate the request of the town that are outside of the conditions here before you. That's the insignia of the Dare County Seal being removed, that's the dormers, that's, that's changing the roof pitch, as long as it doesn't drastically change the program or create the cost to exceed what we have budgeted. I'm not an architect or an engineer, I don't know what that cost is going to look like increasing the pitch from a four twelve to a six twelve. I, you know, I can't say that it would be drastic or not, but if it's something that we can accommodate, then by all means, we will work with you all to address those needs to make it fit how you would like to see it.
Okay.
In that regard.
All right, all right.
I think there's two questions here. Let me start with Mayor Protem Selby. So the motion that is on the table is to just use the, the conditions that are listed in the agenda packet. There's been a motion and a second for that. If you want to stick with that, we can stick with that. And if you want to change that to include some conditions related to roof pitch or the seal, we can do that, too. I wasn't sure which one you ultimately said right before he was going to call for the vote, which one you said you wanted to do, whether you wanted to change it or keep it. It's up to you, you made the motion.
I, I, I want it, I would like for it to stay, because whatever seal, whatever pitch or whatever, I feel confident that the county will work with that, if we need to change it down the road. I'm very confident on that.
Well, and the only, the only issue I see with if the roof pitch changes, they might have to come back to you for an amendment to the special use permit. So I could see where it would be useful to modify it to include a condition that the county will use either a four twelve or a six twelve roof pitch based on an analysis of whether or not the, with a preference of a six twelve roof pitch with it, an analysis of whether or not that is cost effective and will ultimately affect the use of the building negatively. If you'd like to amend your motion to include that as a condition, you can do that. If you don't, you don't have to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that.
Okay, and would you amend?
Yeah, I'll amend it, sir.
Your second. So, so that's on the table now. So that roof pitch question is now going to be a condition that we'll figure out how to write into the ordinance, and Jamie's going to have to figure out how to write into the minutes, but that's, that's where we are.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, unless there's further discussion, I believe it is ready for a vote.
I'm a little bit confused. We have voted on the motion.
No, sir, we have not voted yet.
All right, I thought we voted on it, and she took it back, and she wanted to change it. She did.
She did change it. So she has changed it to, it's a motion to grant the special use permit.
Now we voted on her present motion.
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor of Ben's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ben. Now I said to have it, so motion cast, good. Go ahead, who is it, Melissa or Ben?
Justin.
Ben?
Yes, sir. Let me, my computer has, I talk too much, so my computer has shut me out. So the next matter is the quasi judicial hearing for the Manio High School Special Use Permit Amendment to add a softball field house, Mr. Mayor. And just like the prior hearing, this is a quasi judicial hearing, and all of the standards and evidentiary issues.
Justin. Justin.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way I could get you to stick around for just a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Because I do have a question about something else that I think you could help us with.
Yes, sir.
I won't keep you long.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I misled him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the standards are essentially the same as before, and so I'm not going to reread everything that was there. Hopefully, everyone who was involved in this hearing was also here for the prior hearing. So we'll call up the folks who may need to testify to be sworn. Yes. Now, we need to swear them again.
Again?
Yep. It's a new hearing, a new world.
I don't see anyone from the school system here.
I don't either.
Which is, okay.
Have you got a picture of a field watch?
All right, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name your name for the record.
Matt Farmer.
It's going out in the softball field, it's just a field watch, is that right?
So, Mr. Farmer, if you, you're up to provide the town's evidence on this?
We received, this is actually an amendment to the current special use permit. We received the application from Dare County regarding building a softball field house located, as you can see, it's, I can't see it, it's behind, it's between the soc, no, that's not, oh, that's an old one. It should be behind the soccer field and the softball field. So that's what they're proposing. It basically provides, I guess, a small locker room and changing area for the softball team and some equipment storage. But after my review of their plans and application, I found that, that it is consistent with the, the current Manio High School Special Use Permit, the town zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, and plans that, ask that the board approve the amendment to their special use permit.
Are there any questions from the board?
Are there any questions from the board? The applicant doesn't seem to have anyone here, so no questions from them. Is there anyone else to present evidence for the town? Okay. And without the applicant having any evidence, we'll turn to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to give factual evidence related to the standards that are applicable to granting this special use permit amendment? Again, if you could raise your hand, that would be great. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and put it, give it back to you, Mr. Mayor, with the, um, board can vote to grant, deny, or grant with conditions the amendment that's been requested. I don't recall, Mr. Farmer, were there any conditions that staff proposed for this one?
No, there are no conditions.
All right. We heard from the county, um, town planner, and he didn't have any objections, no opposition from the public, no objections. What's the feeling on the permit for building a softball field house at Manio High School?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Manio High School Special Use Permit Amendment to add the softball field house.
Second.
Second. Motion with a second that we approve the permit amendment for Manio High School softball field. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? I've seen to have it. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on your agenda is item seven A, which is the continuation of the zoning text amendment for the B1 Village Business District.
And, Mr. Mayor, I can handle that for a moment, if you want me to, to give everybody where everything is. You've already had-
We get a professional perspective.
Or unprofessional one, depending on how you, how you look at it, I suppose. You've already had your public hearing on this, it's already been to the planning board. You continued at last meeting to give some further thought to it. There are a couple of changes that I would like to recommend that are more typographical, typographical and ultimately mistakes that I made. So if I could correct those, that would be wonderful. And what they would be is on page three, line four. I meant to remove, so when I drafted this, it was changing a prior draft. And I meant to remove the strike through for the terms commercial use and. So that should be, that strike through should not be there. And then on page three, line forty-five, where the, in this section, this is the primary change related to commercial over retail and services. When I reread this at the last meeting, the, the last clause about otherwise allowed in this district and uses, it was meant to modify retail services, offices and food service, but it could accidentally be read to say any other use that's allowed in this district could be there. And that's clearly not the purpose of what this change was. So I think that there should be a inserted, so long as such uses are otherwise allowed in this district on that line. And that's what I would recommend. If any, before anybody makes a motion, I can bring those up again. But I, I think that that, like I said, those are typographical errors that are clearly my mistake and I apologize for that, but I think that they should be corrected to, to meet what everyone was thinking this was meant to say. And otherwise, Mr. Mayor, I think it's with the board to have discussion and consideration of whether or not they want to adopt this as presented or make changes or send it back to the planning board.
Okay, let's finish the board discussion.
I have a comment. I am the one that had asked last time that this be continued to this meeting. And the reason is, I was concerned about one of the changes that I thought may have some negative impact. And so what I would like to suggest is that we go back to the original. So section seven dash two, we go back to the original where we, where we talk about there not being a minimum lot with, in other words, a builder can build, can use that, the entire lot to build on. So we had, we had, on this version that you're looking at, there was something that I, I think I didn't really mean to get in there. And that was that there would be a fifty percent except for lot coverage. Except the lot coverage may be increased by five percent up to a maximum of seven, seventy percent total for each one thousand square feet. I found that might be too restrictive for that, for that district. So I wanted to suggest that we go back to the original where a builder would have more leeway of how much coverage for their, for their lot. So that would be something that I would like to see changed. In other words, go back to the original. So we would keep section seven dash two, A through G, as it was in the former, the original zoning code.
Would you, I think I understand what you want to do. You, you just want to make it so that the fifty percent lot coverage is, goes back to none.
Exactly.
So essentially on, in seven dash two B, page three again, page three is just a-
Problem.
A problem child page here. But lines nineteen through twenty-two, you want to remove the underlying portion, which is new, and you, and just leave the strike through. So you, you want to leave none as the, as the lot coverage?
Like to have none as the lot coverage there. But Ben, I think, Melissa, we had talked about this. Can you explain it better than I can in terms of keeping the other minimums to none as well?
It, it's not changing as the others.
The, the lot size was not changed.
You can't change it. We were proven it. Have one?
No. No, sir.
Okay.
It, it's not changing anything. And so the ellipses-
Just removing.
Yeah, the, well, the ellipses that are at the end on line twenty-four-
Yes.
-mean, mean that C through G just stay as they are.
Gotcha.
So you didn't have to cut and paste them all in here for no showing a change.
Thank you for that explanation. I understand. So yes, from my perspective, if we could remove the fifty percent-
Well, essentially what you want to do is move the ellipses above that B and strike everything out of the-
And make sure that we have none.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, none's, none's what's already there. So if you don't change B, then it'll stay none.
But none, none is, has a strike through, so.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is just strike everything from line eighteen through line twenty-two and move the ellip, or the ellipses will be the only thing left. So that would be a minor change to A and then nothing to B through G.
Okay, gotcha. Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
And I just wanted to make sure, and I'm trying to find it, that the word encourage was changed to?
Yes.
That's out.
Yeah, that's, that's at the lines forty-three through forty-six of page three, where it says, instead of encouraged mixed use residential above retail sales and service as long as the first sport is retail services, offices or food service, which are otherwise, so long as those services are actually already in the list of things that are allowed in that district.
I have a comment. I think I see an error and I, I'm going to bring it up there to show it to you real quick.
Sure.
Just before there's a motion.
If it's something that I did, it's likely-
(laughing) It's page three.
It is page three.
And then what's the lot coverage?
Okay. I can fix that too. So what Melissa was pointing out, which, uh, I'd have to look back to see how badly I screwed this up, but it's probably my mistake as well. But, uh, the change at line seven on page three references subsection A, and it's actually subsection B. And then the change that you were striking out is actually subsection G. Not going to matter if we don't make that change, but if the rest of the board would like to make that change, then we might need to adjust some, um, some of the typographical issues there. But otherwise, it's, it's, um, I think it, I'm not sure why it has that, but it's, uh, that's a mistake as well.
Okay.
What are you saying?
That it's easily fixed, depending on what the board wants to do, I can help you fix it.
And that's one problem, that you can steady that.
Yeah, I think the key is-
Don't betray it.
Yeah, I think the key is, does the board want to keep the maximum lot coverage at none? Or does the board want to change the maximum lot coverage to the fifty percent except for, that it can be increased to seventy in certain circumstances? If you want to keep it as none, then that makes it relatively easy. If you want to keep it as proposed on the face of this ordinance amendment with fifty percent, then we'll have to talk a little bit further through the change.
And the change to none is the easiest way in your opinion?
Yes, sir. And that's actually not a change. So changing it to none is changing the face of what you're amending to none, which means you're keeping what's already in the ordinance, which is none.
That's right.
Sorry to be confusing in that regard.
Really the only thing you're changing is taking encourage. Which we talked about in the very beginning. I don't know how it was turned into such a fiasco, but I'm good with keeping it at none, changing encourage to required and let's vote on it and we'll be done.
Make a motion to affect it?
I definitely-
Go ahead.
Um, I think I'll go with the main thing, but is this, is this lot the original capital?
Well, the, the town was the, you know, this was a town-driven process, essentially related to the, um, the retail over commercial, the language about encourage that Commissioner Clizal was talking about. But I think in the, in the process, while there were changes being made in the B1 District, I think that the town staff had heard some pushback from commissioners and others about the fact that, do we really want new buildings in the downtown to be going, to have lot coverage all the way to the setback lines? Which is what leaving none in the lot coverage allows. And in thinking about that from a planning perspective, in two thousand and three in small towns, that's not super common. You know, if you look through the rest of eastern North Carolina, Hartford, Edenton here, you know, it was common because people built firewalls and buildings right next to each other. And there, and a fair amount of the downtown, as Mr. Fearing had pointed out, i- is like that because that's a way that people develop when they have the ability to, to have maximum lot coverage.
And air by park on the sidewalk.
Yep.
They want parking lots and-
Yep. So, uh, from a planning perspective, from a two thousand and twenty-three planning perspective, it's not uncommon to change that. But it also, it's up to this board, it's a policy question in whether or not you like the fact that, you know, if the downtown is redeveloped in some form or fashion, it, commercial buildings will be able to have zero lot lines. They'll be able to go out all the way to the setbacks. And if that's what you want, then that's what you keep. And if it's not what you want, then, then we'd want to change it. But if it's what you want, then that makes the ordinance easier and I'm not hearing anybody say otherwise at this point.
Do we have, there's further discussion?
There hasn't been a motion, yet.
Do we have a motion?
Sure, I, I move to, oh, this is complicated.
Move to approve the proposed amendment with the typographical changes that the town attorney has proposed, as well as the removal of what is shown currently on page three as lines eighteen through twenty-two and the adjustment of line seven to show B rather than A.
That's my motion.
Why are you on the floor?
I'll second it.
With a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I've seen to have it. Motion carries. Move on.
Yes, sir. Item eight A on your agenda under new business is budget amendment number four.
Melissa, can I just halt real quick?
Sure.
And just insert, so he doesn't have to stay here any longer. The College of the Almar. It's a beautiful building. I think when you guys put the generator in the back, there wasn't compensation for putting the tank on the bottom, so that generator is about five or six feet above that wall. I was told that there was going to be a lattice or something to block that view or that top of that Kohler generator from the street and from the neighborhood right there. And I just wanted to ask if you could follow through with that, with the county, with the commissioners, to see if that's still ongoing, because it is, I mean, that generator runs every morning at seven thirty till nine and-
You're at work, it is.
I'm out walking my dog by then. But I, you know, if you could look into that, that would be great, because I know there was talk that they were going to do it. I know Barnhill, Barnhill had said somebody had come to them to come up with a proposal. So I just think the whole building's ninety-nine point nine percent, but if you could finish it off with some lattice or something just to cover that big, not attractive generator sticking four feet. All right. I appreciate it. You're free to go. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. Continue.
That it?
That's it.
All right. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yes, sir. Budget amendment number four. So this records the revenue from the transfer of the ARP funds to the grant fund and then into the general fund. So that's the easy part of this. The other part of this is that we have an opportunity to send one of our police officers, our investigator, to some leadership training. He was accepted into a program at NC State. The original budget did not include the amount of funds necessary to cover that because he was just accepted. So we are proposing that we move ten thousand dollars into the police department's travel and training to cover that leadership training for our investigator. And I think, oh, there she, I could never find Heather in the meetings. Your finance director is here if you have any questions for her about, about this.
All right. What do we have to do now, Melissa?
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Or deny it.
Your what?
Well, I just have one question. Are, are we doing, lumping these two together with the, the grant money or whatever that's going into the salaries and? Or are these two separate motions?
Well, it's, it's all included in the budget.
Okay.
It's one motion, but this is the last movement of the ARP funds. Now that we have crossed that threshold for revenue replacement, it, they are essentially no longer ARP dollars, they are now our revenue replacement dollars. And so that is the last time you guys will have to vote on anything ARP, so.
So are those put into the general fund to use for payroll?
Yes, essentially we-
Salaries?
Yes, essentially, we, the, the town has expended enough funds through salaries and wages and benefits that we've met that amount that the government allows us to use those dollars for. Um, so now we're just replacing, basically replenishing the town and reimbursing ourselves for what we've spent. So the money that goes into our general fund now can go towards other things that we need, essentially replacing money for salaries or, or other items, because now that money is no longer ARP money, so it's not tied to specifics for grant purposes, if that makes sense.
In order to spend ARP dollars basically any other way, there are a lot of contingencies applied, so this is the easiest way, um, to be able to replace it in our budget with now Manio dollars.
Okay.
But no, it's, it's just one motion, it's not voting on them separate.
A year, two years? He was hired when Jayce was here, so...
Yeah. I was just wondering how long had he been here? Who would want to pay the amount of money if he decided to transfer after the trip to school? Just my comment.
All right.
A motion would be in order.
Motion would be in order, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right, can I have a motion to the effect?
I move to approve, um, the funding for, I, I don't have a motion in front of me, but, um, I move to...
Budget amendment four.
Budget amendment four.
Budget amendment four.
All right, David.
I'll second.
Motion to approve budget amendment four, will a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, same to Harry. Motion carries.
The next item on your agenda, Mr. Mayor, is 8B, which is a resolution. Um, this is the first resolution of the year, 2023-01, designating town officials to access safe deposit box. So we learned last week that with PNC closing, we have a safe deposit box in the town's name there. We are not allowed to access it. Um, and the same time they, the same phone call that they told us about it, they told us that our names weren't on it. So this resolution, before you, um, appoints myself and Heather, our finance director, as, um, the people that can go and open that safe deposit box and get the contents and process them, process them and do what we need to do with. We do have an appointment, um, next week to go and have, we don't have a key, so they're going to drill it open for us. So we'll, of course, follow up with you all and let you know what we find if you approve this resolution.
I'm making a motion that we approve this resolution.
All right. Motion on the floor, will a second?
Second?
Motion to a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye, same to Harry. Motion carries.
Okay. Item 8C on your agenda is adoption of Board of Commissioners 2023 meeting schedule. Um, and there is, when I reviewed this the other day, I did everything, including adding a note that, um, we would change the February meeting from the first to the eighth, but I did not go back up to the table and change it to the eighth, so we would need to do that. But, um, otherwise, um, other than that one change, um, you all adopt, if you would make a motion to adopt this meeting.
Is it from the February the eighth?
Yes, sir. So from the first to the eighth. And so we'll, we'll incorporate that change.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock for all your meetings now.
All the meetings will be six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion there, um, we adopted the meeting schedule, noting that February fourth, first meeting has been moved to February the eighth.
All right. There's a motion on the floor regarding to the meeting schedule as presented, uh, hold on.
I'll second.
Did I ask this? Motion to second on the floor, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye, same to Harry. Motion carries.
The next item on your agenda is consideration of appointments to advisory boards. Um, and typically, um, annually, the town clerk will present this to you all. These, her staff report is three pages. It's the last three pages of your very long agenda packing today. So as she makes her way to the microphone, I'll, I'll let town clerk gracefully, um, approach the microphone so she can walk you all through this. Um, I will add that there, it has been typical that you all make this decision at a February meeting, um, but at least it's good to hear from Jamie what appointments or reappointments you have before you, um, and if y'all want to talk about it or if you want to take action, that would be fine too. But, um, I don't think you're bound to some decision this evening.
Oh, great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, first, I will start with the Planning and Zoning Board. So currently, it is a five-member board and two of the members have terms that are expiring, and that is Mr. Hal Goodman and Mr. Phil Scarborough. Um, both of them are interested in reappointment. Um, the other members on the board is Nicole Northrup, who is serving as the chair currently, and, um, Mr. Doug, Mr. Doug Backman, I mean, oh, Lord, Doug Backman's over there. I'm sorry. That is not Mr. Doug Backman.
Dave Stempel.
That is Mr. Dave Stempel. He is on the board as well. And, um, who's my best member? I'm getting a brain fart. Sorry, y'all, I just got back from Raleigh.
Jamie Daniels.
Correct. So those are the five that are on there currently. And then, uh, Mr. Doug Backman, he, um, currently serves on the Board of Adjustment and he is retired after 28 years of public administration for the cities of Chesapeake and Virginia Beach, and he is interested in being appointed. And then also, we have Ms. Sheila Garrison, who is a full-time resident of Manio. Um, she is on the Peninsula Property Owners Board, the Rhode Island Women's Club, and, um, she is interested in contributing from her skills and her career as an engineer slash project manager and a team leader. So you have two positions that are open and four people that are interested in those positions. Also, um, every year you guys vote on the chair, so you have to appoint a new chair as well, if you decide tonight to do that for Planning and Zoning.
Well, deciding, I think we need to wait until February the eighth to talk it over because in the past, sometimes in Manio, you just name names without people being, they don't even know they're on the board sometimes. That's not right. I got participating before, though. And, uh, something, one other thing I want to bring up, isn't there a, is there a ruling or some kind of something against attendance at meetings?
Yes. You guys, um, updated it like last year.
If you missed more than two meetings, you come off the board.
Three.
Three, okay.
Yeah, three, three meetings in a year, you come off the board.
We need to look at all of this before we make the, I think.
Correct. Yeah, um, Mr. Hal Goodman and Mr. Phil Scarborough, both of them have perfect attendance. They, they attend, so there, that's not an issue with them as far as attendance-wise, if you decide to reappoint them or if you want to appoint somebody else. What's up to you? Okay.
Do we have anybody on the board that falls in that category of more than three?
Uh-uh, not more than three.
Well, what's feeling the board, you want to wait till the eighth, you want to do it tonight?
I'd say we do it tonight, because eighth is going to be that quasi judicial.
I don't have anybody in mind.
Well, I say wait till the eighth.
I agree with Betty.
Okay, I'll agree with the ladies. Sorry, Todd.
Bobby, you need to vote.
I, I get to say this finally. Motion dies for lack of a second.
I'm fine with eight. I just know those two guys have done a good job there.
All right.
Moving on, um, so the next one that I have up here is the Board of Adjustment. Um, there are two positions and there are only two applications, and that is Mr. Doug Backman and Ms. Jackie Myers. Both of them, um, serve currently on the Board of Adjustment. Um, it's a two-year, um, oh, sorry, three-year term. Um, both of them have like perfect attendance because they only met like once in like the past like three years or something like that, so.
They don't meet very often at all.
Right. Um, so, I mean, if you guys want to appoint them tonight, that's fine. That's the only two applications I have anyway, is for them to, they're interested in serving as well, so if you want to tonight, that'd be fine, unless you have somebody that you want to throw out there. What's up to y'all?
Well, I still think we ought to rely on till the eighth.
Yeah, I'll know.
I thought it was all of them. Is it all?
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then I'm just going to give you guys a report and then y'all just do on the eighth. All right, cool. That works. That makes it easier on me. All right. Cemetery Board, Mr. Rodney Benson. Um, he has also have really good attendance, um, for the cemetery board. They meet as needed. Um, that's the only position right now for reappointment for that, and he's interested, and that's the only application I have for that. Community Police Advisory Board, I have four members left on the Community Police Advisory Board, which is Ms. Therese Fromagla, Mr. Bob Keeney, Ms. Michelle Lewis, and Ms. Melissa Bender. Um, our other members that were up there was, uh, Mr. Tim Purdy and Ms. Stephanie McCoy. Both of them moved away before their terms expired. And one member, Mr. Warren Martin, he passed away, um, last year. So we have three vacancies on, due to those people being absent, but all of them, all their terms expired, all at the same time. So, uh, my recommendation would be that if you guys do decide to appoint, that you do a stagger term. So you say, okay, we appoint these people for two years, we appoint these people for three years, so that way we don't come back with a full seven, all in one shot, um, again. Also, we have a high schooler, Ms. Nia Pleasure, who is interested in serving on the board in the capacity of a liaison, so we're trying to get some high school input, some youth input. Yes, yes, Commissioner Steffens. So, um, that is one thing that we are really, really happy about. Um, I can't take credit for that. That was definitely, um, Ms. Melissa Bender and Mr. Hunt Thomas. They were really getting that together. So we have youth representation, hopefully, on the Community Police Advisory Board. Um, also, there is Mr. David Hart. He is new to our community and he wanted to get involved, so he was also interested to be on the Community Police Advisory Board. Um, last but not least, we have the Preservation and Architectural Review Committee, um, Sarah Benson and Ms. Courtney Schultz. Both of them are interested in reappointment. Um, Sarah Benson is currently the chair. Um, both of them have like perfect attendance. Um, they have both been on the board before. I don't know why I'm nervous, my voice is shaking.
Sorry, slow dance.
Yeah, I'm going to breathe.
I'm only just paying it from the baby.
I know, I've been running. It's the baby. Um, Ms. Sarah Benson is, uh, part of Gophhar. Um, she organizes our town litter pickup all the time. Um, both of them are very active in the community, um, and they're both interested in being reappointed, and those are the only two applications I have for Hart. So that is your board votes.
How many people usually serve on Park? How many people, how many members do you?
Seven. There were five.
Capable of, uh, and they added two representatives from Marsh's Life, so there are two that
serve in the Marsh's Life communities in this decision.
All right. We'll look into it February the eighth, keep consideration all these people to this.
Why you looking? Nobody important to look at me. Mayor and Commissioner Comments is next.
I have one thing that's a little bit of a hangup, and I admit it's a hangup and I don't, there's a cemetery. Cemetery goes back a lot of good ways. Manio, quality boys, cemetery belonged to the town of Manio, it's kept up as well. Maintenance crew does a good job. There is one site out there that I wish the Cemetery Committee would look into, which is right beside Senator Mark Bastide's site. We all know about Senator Bastide, he's one of the most prominent people in the state of North Carolina. And, uh, it's almost a mockery of what's been made out there next to his site. Now, I know there's certain rules and regulations that have to be placed on sites out there that, uh, certain stones you can't use. I know I've looked at it, uh, the design, you've got to have certain design. This is hilarious, and I'm saying it publicly. I'm not saying who, but it's public. I later found out that he's not going to be buried here, he's going to be buried somewhere else and it's going to be a monument to him. That's what I was told. I would like the Cemetery Committee to look into this site. Just look into it. You don't find some really regular items.
Yes, the, the board is, Cemetery Board is aware and they will be having a meeting on this, so this is already something that's in the works. We've already discussed with the person who owns the lot, so we will have our next meeting, we will have him there, and we will discuss what has transpired since.
Good night. All right, uh, Betty?
Well, my comment is I, uh, am very, uh, excited about what I saw in Manio on Sunday. I know we had to make a schedule change, but I was surprised that the number of people was there with the, um, move to Sunday. It looked pretty. The town of Manio, and I know y'all feel the same way, looked very good. Very, very good. Their New Year's Eve, um, well, not New Year's Eve, uh, Sunday was fantastic. I know it took a lot of hard work from staff and volunteers, but it was worth it. Manio really shined, very bright. Thank you to all the staff and volunteers that participated. It was one beautiful event. Okay.
Here.
I was going to say exactly the same thing. Um, really good work. You know, sometimes, um, those awkward times where, you know, we thought we were going to be able to have it on, on New Year's Eve and we just weren't able to because of the wedding, or, uh, the weather, but it offered an opportunity to try something different. And I did just a, an unscientific poll, and people loved that it was at 7:00, they could watch fireworks on, um, on, um, uh, New Year's Day. They loved it. And the reason I heard, I didn't hear one negative, all positive, and the reason they said is that they could have their kids at 7:00 in the evening, it's not too late for kids to enjoy, um, the fireworks. And then, um, I also heard from folks who were on the other end of the spectrum, um, more elderly, who said, "We are sound asleep by midnight, so having fireworks at 7:00 PM is perfect."
Excellent. Everybody can watch from 7:00, all the kids can be there, everyone, and it's, uh, and why not dare to be different? We'll say D-A-R-E, just be different than everybody else. Have fireworks at 7:00. Maybe? Todd?
Uh, I just echo what these two women have said. It was an awesome night. Um, it's come a long way, uh, but I think Michelle has done a great job. I think, um, we were blessed with the weather for sure, but it was nice to see, I mean, I wasn't sure whether it was going to be 200 or 2,000, but I think it was closer to 2,000. So, yeah, everything went well.
As you know, this was Todd's baby in the beginning, he stayed on it and he, he running a lot of, he'll tell you about the opposition Sunday when he wants to, but he had a lot of opposition at first, but now I think everybody in Manio sold on the idea of New Year's Eve in Manio. Ruth?
Um, not much, but I did have a question. Does Man, this is very bizarre, but I'm, um, I'm deep in study around sidewalk repair across the nation, and North Carolina is actually extremely innovative. Raleigh is in its own way just crushing it with, uh, with even the way that they connect with their citizens on sidewalk repair. You can have, if there's a fire anthill, um, they can just simply ping on the map and it goes to Public Works, and then Public Works knows there's a fire hill ant that needs to be taken, taken care of. So it's really interesting how they're innovating out there. But, um, uh, I saw Max Head actually is, is beginning to issue bonds, and I just wondered out of curiosity, has Manio ever issued bonds in the town? Have we ever in our history? We have? Okay. So. Okay, well, I can get, I could check it out later. Oh, you have a copy of the bond on the wall? That's even more interesting. Okay. All right. Just wondered if we had a precedent?
It was 19.
19 something, okay. So we know how to do it. We have done it before, because I know there's a legal process around, um, actually opening that up as a local government, so just curious. It's good to know. That's all.
Okay. Anything further coming for the board? All right, we will, no, we'll recess to win.
January the 18th.
January the 8th of a workshop, uh, 6:00.